The time to be being seven o'clock. I'm gonna formally open tonight's school committee meeting for August the 30th, 2018. First order of business on the agenda, we have two sets of minutes to vote on tonight. So, can I hear a motion?
Do we do them together, or do you want to do them separate?
Uh, whoever makes, you know what, whoever makes the motion has the choice.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June 14th and July 26th.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? I know that the, the meeting minutes from June, we had sent back for a couple of revisions, and it looked like those revisions were made, so I'm comfortable with those going forward. July 20th, the, yeah, the July 26th minutes looked really straightforward.
Right.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero, thank you. Chairperson's report. I'm gonna start off with a, a long list of thank yous. The opening week of school is not easy for anyone. Being in the business, I have also had the experience of my first week of school also. So, I wanna take a moment to publicly thank our teachers for beautiful classrooms and engaged students, and persevering through the weather conditions this week, because it wasn't easy. The support staff, the maintenance folks, the secretaries, the paras, they're doing a terrific job. Our buildings look great. The secretaries did a wonderful job of managing all of the different expectations this summer and getting out supply lists, and managing the, the shift over to the new student information system. They're doing a terrific job. Our central office staff, from Michelle in the business office, to Dr. Girardi and Ms. Godet, and our building level administrators. I'm hearing wonderful things that are coming out of our buildings. I know it's only the end of the first week, but I'm greatly, greatly, greatly encouraged. My children came home happy, you know, this week, and they had nothing but great things to say, and I'm lucky enough to have a kid in the Green Meadow and a kid in the Fowler, and it feels like good things are happening. I'm, I'm really, really pleased by that. Um, next, good luck to all of our athletes. Fall sports are kicking off. I know that we've got cross-country, and we've got soccer, and we've got football, and we've got our co-ops. So, just, good luck to all of our student athletes for a really competitive season and health, because it's student athlete, and, you know, I, I just, I wanna see everybody play well, compete hard, be respectful, but also, um, just, end the season healthy. And injuries as a high school athlete is really, really rough. Um, and then finally, for those people in the room, and maybe people who might eventually watch it on YouTube, just a friendly reminder that because we moved our, we, our meeting that was originally scheduled for last Thursday to tonight, we actually have a meeting again next Thursday night. Um, so, we're meeting two weeks in a row to stay on the originally published schedule. We just moved tonight's meeting, we haven't adjusted anything else. So, we will be meeting two weeks in a row, and then again on September the 20th. Um, so, Dr. Girardi, I think that concludes my superintendent's report, or my chairperson's report. You're up for superintendent's report.
Whoever you are.
You're, you're thinking too fast.
I'm sorry, I'm sleep deprived, and it's been a long week.
Yeah, the start of school, but, uh, I'm pleased to report, uh, that on Monday and Tuesday, we had all of our staff back for the opening day ceremonies and professional development. I wanna thank school committee member Hogan for attending on Monday, school committee Branley for attending on Tuesday, and Whitney Retalik from the Maynard Anti-Racism Alliance, who also came on Tuesday, and she shared the information and resources that she has available for us too. So, I wanna thank all of those special guests that we had at our opening day, uh, two days of PD. So, that was really nice. Um, and I am just so excited, it was very positive. You know, we've been reading the energy bus, and we wanted to start the year off by celebrating the staff's success and positive energy. We started some new traditions, we recognized over sixty teachers who participated in summer PD. We also had these cute buses where people could put index cards in and just recognize a colleague for something they did that was really nice or helpful.
Awesome.
And then we made sure we got those out to their mailboxes, um, and in fact, I think Colleen got one too, from one of the staff members. Somebody sent her a really nice note as well.
No surprise.
So, it was, it was nice, I think, Michelle, you might have gotten one too. I think it was, did you? No? I know Colleen did, but anyway. Uh, it was nice for the staff to recognize each other.
Because, just kidding.
Yeah. Sometimes the business officer asks, say no.
Colleen, I think Colleen in our office did get one.
Okay. So, it was a, a nice way for people to recognize each other, and we're gonna continue that tradition at all the faculty meetings, principals each have a bus, and the, the teachers will be able to put in cards that they can recognize each other, and the principals start the meeting off by reading a couple, and then just putting the rest in the teacher's mailbox for them. So, it's a nice new tradition we started with the energy bus. And then on top of that, uh, I really wanna do something special for our staff, 'cause as you said, everybody, custodians, secretaries, tech, teachers, paraprofessionals, we have so many good people, it's hard for me to, to tell everybody how wonderful they are. But I did, um, write some letters of commendation, uh, and so, I'd just like to, uh, these were the easiest ones, I still have plenty more to write, because there's so many teachers who, and staff members who do such wonderful things, but I would like to, you know, let you know, the people who I wrote letters for, for the first day, and they were Jennifer Adams, Colleen Andrade, Susan R. Sleg, Janet Cohen, Patricia Feeman, Lauren Jutta, Denise, Denise Hatch, Walter Ignichuk, Lisa James, Catherine Krasinski, Jeanne LaBelle, Nanda Landers, Mike McGinn, John Malika, Paul Orzak, Sean Perlm, Rhonda Roche-Low, Mark Sinopoli, and, and Margaret Sullivan.
Wow.
So, uh, it, it felt good to be able to recognize how special all these people are, and it was, they were very easy to write, and I'm gonna be writing some more, and we're gonna make sure that we keep recognizing all of the successes of our staff.
Cool.
So, that was a great start. And then, the only other information I have is a reminder from the school committee, to the school committee for Colleen, if you're planning on registering for the Mask Mass Conference to let Colleen know, uh, 'cause it's getting to the point where she wants to make sure she gets us registered. So, that's my superintendent's report.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Girardi. Um, Jen, you have the floor for district and school improvement plans.
Thank you. So, the, um, Maynard Leadership Team, which is made up of principals, team chairs, myself, superintendent, director of student services, maybe some other people, reviewed the, I'm sorry, reviewed the action plans and goals from seventeen eighteen, um, and have, we've provided you with that update within your packet. Um, we had sent that out, and based off of the goals that we met, or partially met, or didn't implement, created our action steps for the eighteen nineteen school year. Um, if you recall from last year, these are two-year goals, um, so we are theoretically finishing them up by the end of this year, um, and we are pleased with the progress. Uh, we're not exactly where we wanna be on all of them, but we do believe that we will make significant progress this year. Um, the focus of the academic goal is on improving the writing across, uh, the district, using our common assessment data to identify areas where we need to do that, um, and we once again have started looking at the MCAS data, we have some of the curriculum analytics, even though we don't have the formal, you know, release yet, um, we already have begun to dive in there, and it looks like some of the work that we're doing is working, and some places where we need to continue working. Um, we also are focusing on PBIS, um, at two of the levels, um, for social-emotional, both buildings had a PBIS launch with their faculty, and are doing various specific things to make sure that behavioral expectations are consistent, um, and consistently applied, um, and they're clear for students. Um, and then at the high school level, um, really focusing on identifying what social-emotional competencies look like for Maynard High School, um, and moving forward, how do we both teach and assess, um, how our students are, uh, developing those? So, that's where we're, we are at there. We also did receive the Coordinated Program Review Final Report, um, which you saw in the packet, um, where we had some components that we needed to work on from the state level, uh, making sure that we had program evaluations in our English Language Education Program, um, doing some components with professional development for our staff on some of the policies. You also noted that there are, um, a couple of policies that we will be bringing here that require updating based on, um, some changes in regulation. Um, so, overall, we feel very confident that we're going to be able to, um, to fix these issues identified by the state, um, and continue to move forward. So, that's where we're at.
Questions or comments for Jen? Go ahead, Mary.
Can I just, a couple of questions? Um, so, on the part that said coordinated program review, the final report, the one that you were just talking about, the third paragraph, it said, there's only one, um, criteria which we received a rating of not implemented. Um, can you share what that one was?
I have it in my office, I could go get it. I don't recall specifically which one it was that was completely not implemented. Um, my recollection is that it may have been a procedural component related to something that was in, um, our handbooks, or, um, something like that is my recollection, but I don't recall specifically, I can get that information.
Maybe just the next meeting.
Yep, for sure.
That would be great, I appreciate it. And then, um, there was comment in there about the vertical teams, um, meeting.
Yep.
Is it K in each one of the, the subject matters, is it K through twelve, or is it just vertical within the school?
So, what we're doing within those two vertical meetings, it is, um, district-wide, but instead of doing K through twelve, we're doing K through five, and then six through twelve. Um, and in talking with the Professional Development Committee and the teacher leaders last year, that seemed to be the best delineation. Um, once we get some, um, momentum with the K through five and the six through twelve, then the other piece that they wanna look at are those places where we bridge. So, having a four-five-six meeting, um, a seven-eight-nine, and things of that nature, looking at transitions between the, between the, um, important grade points and things of that nature, but, um, for the staff, it felt more, um, relevant to start with the K to five, and then the six through twelve focus.
Excellent. Um, and then just the third one, um, with the PBIS, and I know we're only a year into it, but at some point during the year, I would love to, um, have a presentation from, like, one teacher from each of the schools who's real, who's really embraced it, that they could come and just talk to us, and, you know, give examples and that kinda thing of, of how it's worked, with challenges that they've had, so, if you could just put that...
So, one of the things that I have talked with Chairman Hamm about is coming regularly and updating on the goals, so it's not just a once-a-year component.
Yeah.
And I've sent some, um, dates where we would like to come and do that, and actually have the PBIS team come in and present the data and what they're looking at, so that you have a better sense of how these pieces are unfolding. Um, I have to say, Anne Rutherford and Katie Krasinski, uh, and Julie Danforth, who chaired the, uh, Green Meadow PBIS team, Brenna Cotter and Mindy Skora, um, who chaired the Fowler PBIS team, have done a significant amount of work, as have all of their team members. Um, I feel very confident, um, moving forward that we're gonna continue that momentum, um, and very grateful to the state for supporting us. Um, we will continue with the professional development that we had, um, last year, we'll be in year two of that. So, again, it's not something that Maynard is doing sort of in isolation, we're really getting experts, um, in the field to show us how to do this work, and then also collaborating with area districts who are in significant cases, so, it's very exciting, but absolutely welcome back.
Thank you, that'd be great.
Can you, can you just explain why, um, we're doing it in Green Meadow and Fowler, but not at the high school?
So, PBIS generally speaking has been implemented at the lower levels, and oftentimes that's where the criticism that you're giving out stickers for the behavior you expect, like you're giving prizes for what kids should be doing anyway comes from. That's a misnomer, and it's because the districts that are doing that are doing it properly, um, to be honest. So, generally speaking, it's seen as more of an elementary level, um, they're, they are doing, this is out of the University of Connecticut, they are doing a lot more research about implementation in the high school program, of, in high school levels, would, it obviously looks different than it would look at in elementary or middle. Um, and so, I think what the high school, um, is looking at now is really looking at a variety of pieces and saying, what is it that we need to be doing? They wanna bring in teachers, um, students and parents to say, what does social-emotional competency look like here, and what are the programs or, or strategies that we can use? PBIS may be one of them, um, social justice is another one that we've talked a lot about, peer mediation is one that often folks are using, especially when you get up into those older grades. Um, so, they're really just trying to figure out what fits and what makes the most sense for them.
Okay.
Yeah. To be honest, Mauro, your question is exactly the same as what we're wrestling with in my district also.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're several years into PBIS rollout in my district, and elementary and middle school are going gangbusters, and as Jen was referring to, there's really no empirical evidence, or even, sort of like, a, a map that has been laid out for what that looks like successfully at the high school level.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's something that we're wrestling with as a district, and one of the things that's also sometimes pulled in under that umbrella is also the idea of, um, like, restorative justice, and, you know, getting away from more punitive measures.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's a lot of moving parts, but it's difficult for high school educators, because there really is no roadmap at this point.
Right, yeah. Uh, 'cause I, the reason why I'm asking mainly is because, um, the, last year, um, in the Fowler Council, we talked a little bit about what happens when those kids that have already gone through PBIS and have, you know, had that, they get to the high school and there's nothing, like, there's no, you know, no follow-through?
Right, and that's why, right, and there, there will not be nothing, that's probably a quadruple negative.
Double negative.
So, there will be something, uh, let's say, more simply than that. Um, and it's just really figuring out what fits and makes sense. The, the one place where there is an incredible amount of data and research that supports implementation at a secondary level, um, are both, two places, are peer mediation and restorative justice. There's, they've shown significant decreases in, um, school-based crime and, and peer-on-peer incidents and things of that nature.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's where schools, I think, at the secondary level, or, you know, high school level tend to go, um, and it just feels more authentic to the high school kids, you know, sort of the prize-reward thing. Again, if you do it wrong, it winds up being, you know, doesn't work especially with seventeen-year-olds.
Right.
Um, but, there are some schools that are doing it incredibly well. Um, and the other component of this that I think is really important is that the work of PBIS at a very basic level is setting clarity and clear and consistent expectations across classrooms, across buildings. So, even if, you know, they go from Green Meadow PBIS to Fowler PBIS, and they get to high school, and the high school's doing peer mediation, they're still going to have that culture that they've built of what it, what it looks like when we interact together and how we help each other, um, so they're building that culture up along the way.
Right.
Um, but that, there's not, there's going to be something there at the high school, and the high school really wants to spend this year to figure out, what, what is that thing?
Okay.
Um, I was also really encouraged, um, when Principal Kerr agenda's news and notes came out this afternoon, that he talked about some of the policy enforcement.
Right.
And stepping away from more punitive, traditional styles of discipline. So, even just him hinting at it at the end of his first week's notes.
Yep.
Indicates to me, and makes me feel good about the fact that they're thinking about that at the high school, which is really great.
And the other piece that I will say to that regard, both in terms of the academic and the social-emotional goals, um, this change in leadership alignment with the principals for curriculum instruction assessment and principal for, uh, leadership and operations, what Dr. Girardi and I think are seeing really well over the course of the summer, is that one thing that it's doing is that you have a team of people, you have three people who are committed and dedicated to this work, they're talking to each other, they're communicating with each other, they're sharing strategies and ideas, you know, so it's not happening in isolation as it was sort of previously, where it was like, Green Meadow did something and Fowler.
Yeah.
It's really in alignment, which is really nice to see. And that's sort of an organic...
It's been great to see that, to see the work take place, um, and it was great to see the, uh, principals of leadership and operation work with the recommendations from the school committee on the handbooks to try and unify those, for more, those came out much more unified.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we understand what we're gonna try to accomplish, and, and how we can, um, try to improve behavior through other strategies, like, um, taking away privileges and those sort of things. So, so, it's been good.
Excellent.
I always just, one thing that, um, I imagine will start to shake out, but, is there are other programs that are in place, responsive classroom, I know for Green Meadow and zones and non-clear coordinates. So, as PBS comes into play, PBIS, do you think it will help, teachers will start to see how everything fits together and how to, as it's being laid out this year?
I think so, yeah. Yeah, and I, we've talked about this a bunch, where they all seem like separate initiatives, but really, they're all a variety of strategies towards the same goal.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I hope as we move forward, you know, really, again, stage one in PBIS, the setting clarity of expectations, what happens when you meet it, what happens when you don't, and then the second part is the teaching component, and that's where your responsive classrooms coming in, that is where your, um, zones of regulation are coming in, that's the explicit teaching of, um, those expectations, and what do we do when we're meeting them or not meeting them. Um, and they're gonna see those programs as fitting in in that capacity.
Got it.
And then there's a third year of this too, right?
Could you just, while we're worked on it, just remind us, very basic, what year three
looks like?
Yeah, so, I wanna be very careful, we are in year two of our implementation, I wouldn't necessarily say we're on phase two of implementation, if that makes sense. Um, so, uh, phase three of implementation, phase one is sort of expectations, what is it teaching it? Phase, um, two is rolling that out and beginning to deal with, um, some of the problematic behaviors that you're seeing, um, within spaces. If you think about sort of green, yellow, and red, you know, ideas, you're dealing with some of the yellow components that you're seeing, and setting up protocols and practices for, um, those sort of yellow behaviors, um, and yellow situations. And then year three is really focusing, um, on those heavy hitters, the red component, where, you know, some things that we're doing really aren't working, um, and we need some more intensive interventions in some ways. So, that, um, is, is sort of the layout there.
And the phases don't necessarily correspond with years.
Correct.
Right, yeah, great, thank you.
Cool. Other questions or comments? Okay, um, Dr. Girardi and Michelle, let's talk about transferring a little bit of our FYE teen funds into our reserve account.
Yes, so, um, I, if you recall, back at the, um, town meeting, we, that we voted finally to create the, sorry. All of a sudden, I got a tickle in my throat.
Of course.
Yeah, thanks. Um, the special ed reserve fund, and basically what this fund is, is, sorry, um, is a fund that we can move, um, from our previous year's budget into, fingers, um, move from our previous year's budget into, um, to, uh, count for unanticipated unbudgeted special ed, uh, costs. So, at the end of the year, Mike Guzzo and I worked together to reconcile, um, and it ended up that we had twenty-nine thousand nine oh two thirty-six left. I'm sorry, guys, hold on.
Take your time. Bob, tell us a story.
No, Bob, don't tell us a story.
We here forever. No, just kidding. Um, so, we ended up working out that it was twenty-nine thousand nine oh two thirty-six. Um, we don't necessarily have to take a vote to move the funds into, because when we create, established the, um, the account, the fund, um, it was under the agreement that we would agree that what was left within the school budget from the previous year would automatically be moved into that account. But, I just wanted to give you a heads up, when we choose to use the funds, that will be a vote of the school committee, and then also will then be a vote of the Board of Selectmen, just to say, yep, we understand, we're using it for these funds. Again, I wanna reiterate that these funds can only be used for special ed costs that were unbudgeted, unfunded. So, you know, Carol does a great job every single year, budgeting as best as she can for what could happen, but, like, we've had this year already, is a couple of move-ins that we weren't budgeted for, that we didn't, you know, know, we didn't anticipate that were coming, um, so those are the kinda things that this could be used for. Um, so, the other thing to know is that it can't exceed two percent of, um, net school spending, so, with our eighteen-five-fifty, eighteen million five hundred fifty thousand one hundred and fifty, or whatever, that we have now, so it's like around three hundred and sixty thousand that we would be able to put into this account. Now, we don't even have anywhere close, but I just wanna give you a heads up, that that's actually the limit. That would be a nice problem to have, but it's, you know...
Well, no, but Michelle, when I, when I saw this as an agenda item, I crunched the numbers, and both you and Dr. Girardi and Ms. Godet deserve a terrific, like, compliment when we're, it's, yeah, we're returning twenty-nine thousand dollars to our, our special ed reserve fund, but that's about one one-thousandth of a percent.
Right.
Like, that is incredibly accurate budgeting.
That you budgeted, that's great.
Right.
You know, so, I know that that was a thing.
Yes.
That came out in the spring, and, like, oh, we're not budgeting correctly.
Right, we're sending funds back, but again, with an eighteen, eighteen million dollar budget, it's very hard to, to get it down to the exact penny.
One-thousandth of a percent.
Yeah.
Like, that's amazing.
Yeah, it's very good, it's good. And I, and I, I would say, I give credit to all the administration, we've worked on a really great budget, we had a good budget process last year, hopefully a better one even this year, um, but I think that process and that taking a really good look at, like, where we're spending our money, what we're spending it on, and allocating it to the right places, helped us, you know, to really come down to, you know, having the funds and being able to implement the stuff that we needed to.
Um, has anybody communicated that to the selectmen? Um, I know that that was a point of contention with them in the spring.
Yeah.
Has Mr. Guzzo indicated that he would have that conversation, or do you wanna reach out to Chairman De Silva, or the town administrator?
Um, I have had, um, a, kind of like, off-the-cuff, you know, conversation with Chairman De Silva about this whole thing, and I think he came to an understanding on what it was, because the, the, what you're talking about was that school committee meeting, I mean, Board of Selectmen meeting, where they were like, but you return this much every year, and I kept saying, that was awesome for Pete to only have that to be returned every year, you know? It's extremely hard.
Was that the year we got yelled at for giving four thousand dollars back?
Last year, I gave four thousand back, and that was like, you know...
It was like one ten thousand...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we couldn't have come any closer than that possibly, but, um, you know, we, I think too, it, in a lot of districts, the reason that this, like, this reserve account is, I think, is such a great thing for the state to come out with and allow us to do, is because in a lot of districts, it's coming to the end of the year, and if you have funds left, they're, they're spending, spending, spending on stuff, or, you know, prepaying and, and trying to do all these things, because if not, the funds go back in to the town, and then they go into free cash, and you lose the money, basically. This is a way for us to be fiscally responsible, and really move forward in, in reserve the money for the places that we're going to end up needing it unexpectedly. So, I think it's just a great, it was a great move from the state, I, I believe.
Yeah, it seems like every year is almost guaranteed, there's some, there's that kinda...
There's gonna be something every, it's too, it's, it's too big of a number.
It is too big.
And too many moving points to be able to say, okay, I had ten dollars left, like, I mean, that's, that's unrealistic, but, you know, it is so beneficial for us to be able to, you know, start putting some funds in there, so we're not caught off-guard, and if we are, you know, we have somewhere that we can move to first before we have to go back to the town and ask for something else, so...
Cool.
That's great.
Yeah, it's good.
So, just procedurally, if you end up needing to use the money?
To use it, we'll have to come for...
You would come here, we do a vote, and then we'd separately go there to Board of Selectmen?
Right, no, then, then I think they put it on their agenda and put on it.
Oh, we don't have to go?
We don't even have to go, they just have to vote, we vote on it first, then it goes to them, and then, once they vote on it, um, Mike then, you know, pays the bill that we send them for, is basically.
Awesome, perfect, that's great.
Nice job, Michelle.
No problem.
All right. So, at this point, we're going to citizens' comments. Um, friendly reminder that citizens' comments is an opportunity for the members of the audience to comment on something that was an agenda item, request a future agenda item, or bring something to our attention. So, that being said, are there any cities, citizens' comments tonight?
And if people could come to the microphone and say their name, just 'cause I know it can feel funny if you've not done that, but we do record the meetings, and it's just helpful for the people that are watching.
Good evening, I'm Buon Toddle, I'm trying to do some follow-up, we can talk about a texting policy, I have received no updates or anything on that.
Okay.
Uh, I'm also doing follow-up on the fact that I wanna know when the policy changed, that when a student leaves the campus, that you receive an email and not a phone call as a parent.
Okay.
And that the email is only sent to one parent, and it was not sent by the principal or vice-principal. At that point in time, I did talk to the per, the vice-principal that day, and he was not aware of it, or he would've stated so.
Okay.
This came from a counselor. Now, we were all kids, and we all grew up though, working, so it's a different generation, but at this age, we do dumb things, okay? And to get an email and not a phone call is just not acceptable, and I wanna know when that policy changed.
Sure. Um, as far as the texting policy, I know that you brought that to our attention, we just seated our policy committee, subcommittee for this year, first meeting should be upcoming. Please come back in a couple of weeks, once they've had a chance to have their initial meeting, and, and we can give you an update on that. As far as the history of the policy, I'm looking to Dr. Girardi or perhaps Ms. Godet[1726.98] on that one, because I know that the email is an automated part of the student information system, and that is triggered by teachers posting attendance. I know that that's a feature that's in a similar system that I use in my particular district. But as far as the phone call, I can't speak to that.
We can...
I wouldn't know.
So texting policy is actually more of a bigger policy, that's a social media policy.
Correct.
So that's going to take some time to work on. I think we mentioned that we were waiting until after we negotiated the contract, that we would then address it, and luckily, you know, we now have a contract.
We have a finalized contract.
So the new, the new policy subcommittee will be working on a social media, which is a bigger picture, because texting is just one piece of that. So that's, that's a policy that I don't think will happen really quickly. It's something that we are looking to address, though, and we will be bringing it forward as a policy subcommittee. As far as the individual issue, I think the best thing for me and you to do is to sit down and talk about that, and then talk with the administrator that you had the concern with. I don't think there's a change in policy. I think there's protocols, there's handbook protocols, and then we can review that and see what happened in that particular instance. So if we sit down and talk about it, I think we can look at it.
I mean, the main concern is, where's the child? You expect them here?
Yep.
And due to the incidents that went on that week, I didn't read that email until Monday.
Okay.
You know, I really would rather get a phone call than a knock on the door. I mean, you know, was the officer that comes to the school here, who's he also advised, is a question, because that also falls into the prudency policy. I'm trying to get information so that, you know...
Sure. And I'd like to publicly apologize for your frustration. I can't begin to understand because my children are smaller and I haven't experienced this yet. But what I can tell you is that if you follow through and you meet with Dr. Girardi and the administrator, and there's some sort of a change that falls under our purview, like a change in administrative regulations or some of those other things that we do have some oversight on, please understand that we will do everything that we can to try and close that up.
I appreciate your time and effort, and that's I really do, and as you know, I will do my follow-up.
Absolutely, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Hi. We were unsure, maybe just...
Just because it's our first time on our own for this one, but were we supposed to do our student representative report tonight, or?
You can have it on the agenda, but you can still have it. You know what, and that's an oversight on our part.
It's almost always listed.
I think technically this was the meeting last week when school wasn't...
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't have to be ready for it.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's listed right there, and it's usually at the top of the meeting, so if you have to get somewhere, we understand. You guys do like 1,200 things.
Gentlemen, sorry about that. But yeah, originally we were supposed to meet last Thursday, no school was in session, so we just rolled the agenda a week. But absolutely, if you have anything that you'd like to report about the first week of school, I'd love to hear it.
I mean, we weren't sure, we...
No pressure.
Yeah, no pressure.
I mean...
How's the food in the cafeteria?
Two days in.
Start with some good stuff.
I've noticed a few changes, more so senior for me. We kind of jumped right in, we, because all my teachers, we didn't really need any introductions, since most of my class, we've all had them. Besides that, just gearing up for the year, again, me and Pat are both CEOs at WAVM, we just got our new pegboard and the equipment storage, so we're reorganizing that right now. We actually had a meeting yesterday with Mr. Girardi and Steve Wojcik, am I pronouncing that right? About the new issues regarding Chapter 74 and new equipment brought up at WAVM. I'm pretty sure we, the school at least, is, we're receiving 10 new Mac computers, so that will be very nice, trying to figure something out space-wise. Besides that, not too much going on right now, first two days, I'm sure next week's gonna ramp it up, so we're gonna be getting back into the flow of things, and we'll be back next week, since the school committee meeting, I guess, will be next week as well. That's all I have to add.
Yeah. I don't really have much to add. I think that one of the few things, I don't buy lunch, but I know lunch service changed. I haven't heard that many complaints.
Okay. I feel like there's a but con.
Yeah, but, I mean, it looks fine, kind of, a little bit. I know my friend got like, it must have been like chicken parm, like eggplant parm, and it was like just a circle with like a little cheese on top, and, and then there was pasta next to it, and they said it was fine, not great or anything, but it wasn't like a, like a decrease from last year, but it wasn't like any better.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not worse, so that's good.
Yeah.
And then I think one of the only other concerns that I've heard around is the implementation of co-principals. I don't know if it's, if they're, I haven't heard any issues yet, but I know people were like confused, and I don't think it'll be a problem, but I mean, we'll see, we'll see what the student body thinks in the coming weeks and report back.
Perfect.
That's a good first step.
So, do you feel like that's primarily a function of people just don't know what Mr. Carrigan is and Mr. Caruso's jobs now are?
Yeah, 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 I know it's like, I know Mr. Caruso is like leadership and operations, and then Mr. Carrigan's curriculum.
Instruction and assessment.
Okay. Yeah.
I can't even get all of them right.
Yeah, yeah, so...
I just know the ideas.
It sounds like maybe an email to the students.
Yeah.
Sort of a job description would be in it.
Announcement at the beginning of the day or something.
And also just saying the parents.
Absolutely.
It was part of a concern also, like, what was up with the co-principals, also more so like, there was kind of a why in there too, like, why did we go from having like Principal Vice Principal to co-principals?
Okay.
I think that was also another confusing part. But I mean, you kind of just explained a little more, their jobs are somewhat separate, but they work together to achieve that.
It helps to understand, so think that Dr. Girardi is going to oversee Mr. Caruso, Mr. Costello, Fowler, and Mrs. Shea, you know, the leadership and operations side, whereas Jen will oversee all of the folks on the instructional side. So that's not like an email that tells you who's doing what, but from our standpoint, when we want to hold Bob and Jenna Campbell for doing amazing work, like, they need people who report to them, and then they need to get it down to the teachers to make sure they get what they need to help the students, right? So keeping your organization tight and being able to understand when you have a problem, you need things really tight, and who's reporting to who and who is doing what. So from our standpoint, that's why we supported it, because it became very clear to us who's doing what, who's in charge, whose butt is on the line if things go awry, so to speak, not that we have things go awry. But anyway, the other point, I think, is just who is in charge of what, and I think parents have just as many questions.
Yeah.
And so we're long overdue to sort of send out an email about that.
Yeah, and I love you bringing that up to our attention, because like, our, our goal is to raise, you know, young men and women who are thinkers and observers and questioners, and you guys noticed something was going on, and people have questions about that. So now we just need to answer it. So that's great. So thanks for bringing that to our attention.
I just had a question, maybe it's better for you, I'm not sure. The Chapter 74, are we into it right now? So we have, do you guys know any of the students that are participating in that program, or?
Not current.
So, what's going to happen? And y'all will be a part of this here, are you in Mr. Ogden's classes or Mr. Menusian's classes during the day?
No.
No, okay. You still have it, well, as seniors and early junior, so we have to figure out whether or not you'll be able to enter. So essentially, what will happen, Mr. Carrigan, Mr. Ogden, Mr. Menusian, I worked out a structure, will do presentations to the students who are currently in communications classes and who are in the WAVM after-school program in the first few weeks of school. That'll be a presentation that explains what the Chapter 74 program is, what benefits they will get from it, what it is not, like, i.e., you will still take all of your English classes, you will still get a high school diploma and academic high school diploma. So they'll do that piece, they'll do a follow-up meeting in a couple of weeks to answer any questions, and then get the quote applications, which essentially is just that interested in this piece of it. Once we see how many students are applying and whether we need to do the lottery or not with people who are entering, then we will make that decision and conduct the lottery if we need to do that, and plan to enter students by the end of September to appropriate.
So the students that will be part of this assembly or whatever, are they all students or students, you know, just in the ninth and 10th grade, students that have just been involved in WAVM up to this point, or?
So in the fall, it will be definitely ninth and 10th grade students who are currently in communication classes or who are part of the WAVM club. We have to do some math, which I'm not, I have to follow up with Mr. Carrigan or Mr. Ogden to see if we were able to do that, to figure out if a current junior would be able to accumulate the 900 hours needed for that vocational certification. One of the questions that we have that we have not gotten an answer to is whether we can sort of give retroactive credit if there were classes last year or things of that nature, and we just don't have that answer yet. Because certainly, as I'm sure both of you know, if you counted up the number of hours you've been in WAVM over the course of your careers there, it probably far surpasses 900. Yeah, right. So for the fall implementation, it will just be people who are currently in the program. We will then do another presentation for all current eighth graders, ninth graders, and 10th graders, and again, we have to figure out the junior piece, but although at that rate, the juniors will be a real point, it'll be the rising, the rising juniors we have to know the math of, and do a presentation for them with the same information so that they can make a decision about whether they want to enter or not. And then for every year they're out, we will just do that in the spring. But for this first year, we wanted to get it in and hopefully get some dollars, get some dollars coming back.
Do we have a formal name for the program yet, rather than just saying the Chapter 74 program?
WAV.
WAVM, okay.
WAVM TV Radio Production.
Okay, so that's what we're calling the program, and that'll be the certificate title, or?
Yep.
Okay, cool. I just want to make sure I'm using it.
Yeah, the state title is Television and Radio Production.
Television, okay.
If that's what the, that's what our Chapter 74 certification is.
Okay. I think that was more the answer I was looking for, so if I'm talking about it at the farmer's market on Saturday morning, you know, I can say TV and Radio Production Program.
Yeah.
That's done through WAVM.
Right.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's about it. Again, things will start ramping up next week, I know, along with WAVM, but also National Honor Society, we start up next week, we have a meeting. And besides that, it's just gonna be, I think it's gonna be a very eventful year, but it's also just gonna be like a fun year, again, I'm wrapping up, nine months to go.
But who cares?
And...
They're busy year ahead.
Yeah, Pat's got, obviously, a lot more time ahead of him, but...
I saw Libia before she went to school, had a show at Brooke Bakery, and I was like, oh, you watched this again, they went two days? Aww.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, because you must start late.
They start tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
That's it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
I really appreciate it.
Guys, have a good night.
All right. Members' comments and questions?
Can I ask one thing quickly? I just have a quick question.
Oh, yeah.
I just am curious, where can we get a clean copy of that, so we can read the actual goals?
It's on the new website, I believe, right? Did I see it?
Okay.
I believe the documents were transferred, I didn't see them.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Members' comments and questions? Mary, what do you got?
So budget, now that we all have our assignments, budget subcommittee meeting, we should be meeting with the FINCOM and Selectmen ASAP. Do you want me to do that, or are we...
I'm hands-off at this point, it's you and Dawn.
I didn't know what the protocol was, so we'll just...
Well, I can answer to you that, I know the town administrator and I have had several meetings, he's been really great to work with, and he's eager to get this going, so he was just waiting for the announcement.
Yeah, so it's gonna be...
So the two of you, introduce yourselves.
Who are the budget people for? Let's see, so it's Kent and Bob McCarthy.
My thing, but he was just asking, because he wanted to help out the Board of Selectmen.
Sounds good.
And I just wanted to ditto on the communication that's been coming out. My Twitter account is going crazy.
Get an Instagram, too, you have no idea.
I think I'm really sorry that I did this, but no, it's really, really been good from the schools and that, and even the letter that came from Don Dankner and Mary Beth Shea for the elementary school, it's been, it's been a good start as far as the communication piece goes, so just wanted to...
I should be sending out my own communication tomorrow. Instead of a blog, it'll be a news feed, and it'll talk about the app, which will make it even easier for people to get the information. So I've got the app on here.
Awesome.
But I'll be sending more information out about it, and, and it'll be even easier to get the information on your phone.
All right. What would you, oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Just in terms of the app and the website, I know we haven't announced them because they're still, like, Stephen's still finishing up.
I'm going to announce them and explain that we're still transferring content, so, you know, as the educators at this table are exhausted, because the first day, the first week of school, we're just trying to get things done.
Exactly.
Luckily, tomorrow, the administrators are working, so Stephen's gonna be uploading content all day tomorrow. It'll take some time to get it perfect, but at least, we want to get the information out and get people excited about it.
Yeah, and my question generally is always, when might we be telling people? Not, when is it gonna be ready?
Yeah.
Because I think we all understand.
So I planned on sending, yeah, I planned on sending something out tomorrow explaining that we're still uploading content, but this is the new website, this is the new app.
Awesome.
Start learning about it, and then any questions you have, feel free to contact me, and we'll get them answered.
That's great. And I noticed the Tyler system, some of the parents seem very happy with, like, it has locker combinations if your kid forgets all that. They also have an app, so I don't know if you knew that, but they have an app as well.
We do know that. We are slowly going to be sharing information out with folks. Right now, there's very basic information that's out that parents can access, so I'm glad that people are happy with us. But eventually, once we get everything up and running, it's gonna be very robust and very...
Where's the I-Pass? One of them?
So we're moving from I-Pass to Tyler SIS.
Oh.
So we had Tyler, we had I-Pass for decades, and it was antiquated. Now...
Yeah, I did get the emails with that, but I honestly have not had time to go on like it.
Yeah, but it is, the Tyler system's gonna be wonderful, and it took a year of rolling information into it. So when you think about like rolling the website, we're doing that pretty quick this summer, when you consider that a whole, that whole computer system, and Michelle knows because her office has done a lot of the work, it took a year of rolling information into it, and so it has, you know, it's, we're still working on making it better.
That's very commendable, so I know someone who's a parent in the school system who does have said her job in a college system, and was like, they're planning to do this in a year? Like, that's like huge, and you guys are doing it.
They've been doing it for a year, we never told anybody till it became real.
Right.
It was a good support, like, I mean, there was a lot of people working really hard, you know, so I think...
Some of them got commendation letters, but...
Various of them.
What's the difference between the Tyler and the I-Pass? I mean, what is Tyler?
Mary, Mary, you're getting into the weeds here.
Oh, all right, it's huge. Okay, my understanding is it's huge.
Huge.
So the I-Pass didn't give you anywhere near the information, and it wasn't very...
User-friendly.
Not user-friendly at all.
This is very user-friendly for sure.
User-friendly.
Yes. It gives a lot more information.
So, and I know I keep reiterating this, and Dawn does too, and we'll keep doing it, but under the heading of retaining our students and doing marketing, I really would like to see a schedule of what we're doing at each one of the different levels early, early on, like, you know, in the next couple of weeks, I'd love to see, just a schedule of, just so that we can go by, you know, what are we doing at the Green Meadow for parents to come and see what's going on at the middle school, the high school, and then, you know, all the same, and that, so if we could have a schedule, that would be great. And something that I saw, a couple of things that I saw, I had seen an ad, Raytheon has a STEM program that, with girls, Girls in STEM, and I'm wondering if maybe we could, I could follow up on it if you wanted, I mean, the ad was about Girl Scouts, their I could follow up on it if you want, I mean, the ad was about Girl Scouts, their collaboration with Girl Scouts, but I, when I saw that, I was like, boy, Girls in STEM, that would be amazing. Do you want me to follow up and see if maybe we could do, we could do something on that?
Any information you have.
Okay, and then another one was Lincoln Sudbury Solar Panels, this is me, Justin.
That's still me, yes.
So, solar panels in Lincoln Sudbury, they have their parking lot that is dual purpose, and I've got the contact name for the guy there that orchestrated them, should I get it to Aaron, should I get it to you?
So, I would go ahead and give it to Aaron. Aaron and I have been in the process of trying to bounce around with a couple of vendors over the last year or so, and at one point, I digitally signed like a letter of interest that he sent off to a company, but it's, it's been a slow process. But, yeah, I'm questioning why our building is several years old now and we don't have solar panels on the roof, or solar canopies over our parking lot, or, because, I mean, the solar companies are giving stuff, and if we wind up turning around and purchasing the power from them, we get substantial cost benefits savings.
Every time I see our electric bills, it reminds me of Stager.
I sold them on my roof, I'm a huge advocate.
Excellent, all right.
Thank you. If you want to send that to Aaron and copy me, Mary, I'd really appreciate it.
Yes, do that, okay. And then another thing was, see, this is what happens when we don't meet there often.
Yeah, we're gonna do it in a quick little.
I just had a general question, do we know if all of our students participated in the MCAS this past spring?
We know that the majority of them did, and we will not be in a similar situation for participation.
We should not. We're gonna be getting the data soon, they do the release of the data, but they haven't done, they haven't done it yet, so we don't know the details until we get the data released.
But we did take a look at, we did do our discrepancy reporting, each of the buildings looked in, we had a couple of students who reported as not taking it, and we, and they didn't, but it was for medical documentation, so we agree to the, thinking of that's not the right word, whatever, we told them we thought it was wrong, so we'll see on that. But even with those students, because accountability is much more complex this year, it is not just participation.
Excellent.
One of two things, one, the participation will be, two, because they changed the accountability and part of our accountability, or I think it's affective actually, is the bottom quartile of students and how they perform in the different accountability areas, you know, so it is one of the few times where I am waiting for that report to come out and we'll see what it says. So, accountability is one component of that, and we're waiting, certainly keeping our fingers crossed, I feel good about the work that we did with the high school improvement of the following last year on participation at a minimum. We have begun to dive into the curriculum analytics, as I said, which to me is really, again, especially with that bottom quartile being a component of our accountability, which I don't disagree with, I think that's where we need to focus.
So, the hope is that we're gonna get to a different level?
Yep.
And it'll happen that fast?
It could. It certainly could. If we, we could become a level one district, and we would know that just September or something. I don't think that's what's gonna happen.
It's usually at the end of September, and level one would be a huge jump, it would be, you could see some increases and be able to see some positive trends, so.
And I do want to say, the reason a level one would be a huge jump is because of the, you know, that it's the lowest performing schools, and the way, and we can dive into this in the MCAS presentation, but the way in which they grade the high school MCAS versus the other two MCAs, this is incredibly challenging to go down to the level two area, but it's all.
The district I teach in, the district I teach in, which is traditionally one of the highest rated districts in the entire country, is a level two.
I think that is a level two.
Yeah.
Except for our marketing.
That's.
Level two, and we join our colleagues in Lexington and Weston.
I don't need a drop, that's why I just keep saying my district.
Really mean proper words.
But I tell you, they spend roughly $180 million a year on education in their level two district. Wow.
So, last item is.
We spent that, we feel level one district.
Yeah, no. Should we go to the Selectment?
Tell you what, sell that one to the taxpayers.
Absolutely. For future reasons, I'm so excited that we have Trista as our, or just to have a presence, a consistent presence with the police, that collaboration is phenomenal, I'd love to thank them for that, and I will every time I see a police officer, but could we have her come, just to, sort of like what the police did last year?
Yep.
And just talk to us about what she plans to do at each one of the schools and that. And one of the big items that I'd love to hear about would be the vaping, if she could help us figure out what we can do to curtail that, and how difficult it's gonna be.
I was on an airplane, not to digress, and someone was vaping. I'm just, yeah.
Oh, you drive, you see a car with a puff of smoke, it's unbelievable.
There's people doing it at like.
Not to sound judgmental, but I'm a judgment.
Yeah, I'm okay with the dollar sports, I'm okay with the kids. Adults in trend, you know, with the kids, it's just not acceptable.
Yeah, yeah. And so, and what I will say is, she's been great, she's already been to safety committee meetings, so, and maybe we can bring her in with the safety committee, we have some potential initiatives we're working on, so that would be great.
Yeah, safety committee update would be great.
Yeah. Maybe we could get her while we're still here. Is that it for you, Mary? All right, who's next? Dawn, Mara?
Bethland and I chose, I'm sorry, October 3rd for the next parent outreach forum, so October 3rd in this room, 6:30. Colleen helped us find a place and time, and once we just ran it by you folks, we'll start advertising it, so we just want to make sure the school committee was okay.
That's why I blast all this and I'll put it on my calendar.
Will do.
Thank you.
Yep, and if more people want to come from the school committee, we just post it, but certainly more people can attend, so, but we generally don't have the administration join us and just to give them the night off and get people a way to just sort of talk without a lot of formality, so.
There'll be a hem there, the question is if it's me or the business.
Can we bring Josie?
The schools are dog-free, Dawn, you cannot bring a puppy behind a school.
I said Justin's, Justin has a new puppy, because you guys don't care.
I'm cordless.
And I said it should be our therapy puppy.
Can I put a fake service dogs tag on it?
No, now you can't because it's on camera.
I know. I wasn't intending to, it was more, you know, publicly shaming the people that do that.
I didn't realize people do that.
That's a thing.
All right, everybody, let's go to the next.
We're still in the works.
That's usually.
Sorry, I actually don't have any to say, so, I know, it's gonna be a few more.
Just wait, wait till you talk. All right, Dawn, Yosa?
Yes.
I just wanted to remind the, I think Bob or Jennifer, from the last meeting that we had, a parent did get up and ask if we could have some sort of presentation to explain the whole principle and how that's all working, especially the curriculum piece of it.
Sure.
So, if we could maybe add that to an agenda or.
Colleen, as we build the agenda for next week or even the 20th, I don't want to do it on super short, but we can fit it in in the next meeting or two, that would be terrific.
And I was just wondering if Kate Hogan was coming, something?
So, I talked to Jamie last Monday, and I'll touch on that in a moment, and he indicated that he and Kate do have a desire to come in, so I can give Jamie a call at some point and narrow down the window, and then he might be available and do the same thing for Kate. Because education funding is first and foremost on my agenda, because frankly, the Commonwealth gave us the job again this year, the money's there, they just refuse to spend it, so we need to get a little lower, but I'll come back to that, so. Mara, Yosa?
I'm all set, thank you.
Bethland, what do you have?
Well, one of my things related to school spending, I don't know if people saw Denver, Colorado, there's a school district that went to a four-day school week.
Yep.
Is there a way of trying to deal with it, they're hoping to save on like class costs and substitutes, and, and the school committee member already was like, "That's great, creative way to get," it sounds crazy though, when you just read, but then, I totally understand why, because of the issues that education is so underfunded for what we're trying to do for our students.
Did they make the day longer? Did they make the days longer?
Twenty-five minutes. I think it was.
Yeah, yeah, same.
And then every Monday, it's professional, so the teachers are in school, and they're doing professional development on those days and prepping, and so they're, they still have teachers there on a day.
Hmm, that is interesting. Interesting.
And then I was talking to someone who, in the Hockingham district, they're, so my, what do you call it, my nephew and mom, he's going to sixth grade and he's very excited because he's getting an iPad in sixth grade, and they actually, they pay, they pay for them, so they do like a payment plan and, and pay for them to be able to have them come in and win them by the end of the four years, but I was thinking, I think we start now, that's great. People get to pick the device they want, so I just, it was just kind of neat to see that the ways in which we are able to really provide more opportunity to all different kids in comparison to what others, the other districts are doing. And then we did meet about Safe Roots to School.
Nice.
We met last week and.
Was that Randy's initiative?
Yeah, Randy James, and he facilitated having a representative from.
Safe Roots.
Safe Roots to School, which is a program of the Mass Department of Transportation. And she came and we did a, literally a ride around, and Super Bob came and saw some of the, and was part of this, despite the fact that it was a week.
We actually got to see cars speeding around corners that were dangerous, it was, he did a really good job of showing some of the most, you know, scary corners of the meter.
So, I'm starting to continue with that, but she did say that one of the things that they should come in October, November with some of the town folk as well, that we represented DTW police engineers, and look at arrival, and see what arrival looks like and how that goes, particularly more at the elementary and baller than at the high school per se, but, so that was just one of the much we've discussed, and that might be in the theme for the safety committee discussions.
Right.
So, there'll be more on that as we move forward, but, yeah. And then the last thing was, if we have, what was the parent handbook? The parent handbook, there seem to have been things going on, like, I've seen a lot of random questions, and it just made me think, like, are there, where are those are at, and just what will we be able to do with those in due time?
Yep, so I got to live a little this week, where I was anticipating.
Understandable.
But, yes, so Natasha Riviere did an incredible amount of work, and we have a community resource page done, we have a sort of, most important, phone numbers page done, we have a meeting for leadership, the text is done, the organizational chart is not done, I did put out the communication flow chart, if you know, that folks were asking for, for comments, so we are, we are in process on a lot of components, some of which I had hoped that we would be able to share with all of you tonight, which we just don't have, but we are in process on a lot of components that are going to be great, and I will be working and uploading a lot of that to the website as we get these finalized.
That's great.
Yeah, and then we'll see, I know that there's been, it's always the beginning of the year, kind of highlights where communication flow isn't, is or isn't, may or may not be there, the simple, the simple stuff to just have, have somewhere that people can access is gonna be able to communicate, and I'm sure that that will start to really open up more as we move forward. And the last thing was just, we did talk about district goals last time, and I'm just, as far as the school committee's ideas, and I'm just wondering about the next step for that.
That's a really good question.
Thank you. I didn't say that one.
So, I mean, the next thing is, is we sit down and we sort of just codify it, you know, we, we had a lot of different conversational threads, and I think we, you know, maybe we just do a review and we do, like, themes, and we narrow it down to two or three major, which I think is pretty reasonable for the year. I think that that's absolutely something that we could, we could target for maybe our meeting on the 20th, because I know that the 6th is filling up a little bit, but I think that that's something that we can have, we can just have a public discussion about and sort of formalize as a, as a meeting item, so that way, you know, the people who want to show up that night can see us publicly, you know, deliberate on it and sort of have an opportunity for some input before we finalize anything.
That's it.
Cool. So, I hinted that I had a, I had about a 30-minute phone call with Jamie Eldridge last Monday, he had reached out the week before to check in on, with me, on a couple of district initiatives and also get my opinion on a few things, and the things that I do want to report out on is that I pushed him pretty hard on funding. First and foremost, I thanked him because we did see a small increase in the Chapter 70 funding, you know, we got what ultimately was what, like $70 per pupil or something like that, which is nice, but I told him that it's, it's a drop in the bucket as far as small districts like ours are concerned. I pushed him on when he, what he sees as far as the legislators, legislatures desire to fully implement the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Committee, there's also this specter of circuit breaker funding and the fact that it's drastically underfunded, I mean, so the reality is, is we're underfunded in all of our major funding sources, and I don't think that we're going to get all of them, but the one thing that he did leave me with is that he gets the sense that we need to do more on the part of the cities and towns to really push the elected officials, he said he's pro-education, he wanted to see it move forward, I know that Kate's very pro-education, has done some wonderful things for her, her constituent towns, but I think that with the failure of the millionaire's tax, the fact that it was shot down in the court system, I think a lot of legislature, legislators were hanging their hat on that, and they thought that that would fix the problem for them, the reality is, it's not, and now we're gonna have to make some hard decisions. So, I'm gonna continue to push him on that, I'm gonna continue to push Kate Hogan on that, and we'll see what we can do over the course of the next year.
Can we, when they come here, do you think it's fair to just really make sure people understand, plus we're gonna talk about, if you want to understand more about the current environment, budgets, whatever that meeting?
I know, yeah, absolutely. Once we nail that down, I think it's more than fair, but at the same time, I think it's more than fair to let them know what we intend to ask them about.
I was gonna say upfront, I had a time.
Yeah, so they're not cut off.
Yeah, no, because we want, we have a positive working relationship with our elected officials, and I'd like to see that continue, because they do a lot of good things for us. Then I have some work for the Policy Committee, I know that now that the committees are seated, we need to get a meeting on the books with Dr. Gerardi. Social media was talked about during Citizens Comment tonight, I would love to see some of that codified, MASC has some really good model language that I think that we can use as a foundational piece, and then modify it as you see fit to make it fit Maynard, and also Jim Hines from Friends of Maynard Soccer reached out to me, and through their work, through our work, through the work of the Select Board, they have come a very long way in their funding for the Fowler Fields renovation project, the final phase that they're looking for is permission or a policy on behalf of the schools to allow them to sell advertising signage that might be hung on the new fence that would go around the renovated Fowler Fields. We do not have a policy on the books when it comes to advertising.
Really?
The, the signs that are hung on the field at alumni have to just be approved by Dr. Gerardi.
Because we've been having conversations, you know, Dr. Anderson is a big proponent of trying to do that, and I thought we agreed a policy way back then, but.
You, we have a policy for alumni fields specifically, because that was always the highlight, and now you have a soccer field, and the policy goes way back, as you said, to where they did not want to do any advertising for funding, it was all for nonprofit organizations or, or Maynard organizations, and so there is a policy that needs to be reviewed, and there's an opportunity here, because we have an organization who has helped us out to consider that.
So, that's something that I responded to Jim, and I let him know that we were starting the process of the new subcommittee work, so if we could start to look at that, I'd be more than happy to jump in and do some of that work with our policy subcommittee as well, just because I was the liaison with the Friends of Project, so that's, that's the couple of big things that are on my radar right now, and I think that's that. So, at this point, it's not even that late, but I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? Motion base passes by zero.